My pleasure, please stand with my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to be the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the November 26th meeting. Has been moved in second to approve the minutes from the November 26th meeting with the clerk please call over.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steich?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahr?
Yes.
Malan?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be approval of a statement of bill paid in the amount of $1,100,472.
Mayor, if we could have just a little bit of explanation of the number for public records. Can we have just a little bit of explanation? I don't think I've ever heard a million one before. If we could have just a little bit of explanation?
Sure. Well, the largest piece of it obviously is debt service. So we are making payments in the 2013 refunding bond and the 2015 geo bond and then interest on the temporary note. So each cycle on bonds can pay twice a year. One of those times in the year is just the interest over and the second time in the year is the principal interest. And as you can see, that makes up over $900,000 in total. That's really the largest item in the mix. I do want to verify however that the dollar amount because what is on your agenda versus what's on the agenda memo?
You got it. There was a typo when you picked yours early. They're good fix.
This is... Oh, okay. Never mind. I could have noted that before. All right, so it is $1,100,472. $72 and 12 cents. Yes, sir. Thank you.
That includes $900,000 in principal payments?
Yes.
Or $850 is this?
Well, yeah, $850, principal and remaining.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to re-approve the statement of bills?
Second.
Has been moved in second to approve the statement of bill paid. The clerk please call over.
Schreiber? Yes.
Steich?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahr?
Yes.
Yes.
The next item will be request for comments from the public. Doesn't look like there is any. The next item on the agenda will consider Mayor McTaggart's appointments and the reappointments to the city's various boards and commissions. We'll handle that before you. And Zach Stone, make the comment.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council, what's before you is the current roster for the three citizen advisory boards the city maintains. The members who are up for reappointment this year are Judy Curtis to the cemetery board, Brian Smith and Robert Devon to the planning commission, and Randy Reed and Cameron Purdon to the Parks and Rec advisory board. All individuals have indicated they're willing to serve another term. There's really no difference between this roster and the last roster that was approved by you all this time last year, except for we'll point out Lauralee Fisher on the cemetery board moved out of the city limits as she's no longer serving on the cemetery board. And we'll be looking to fill that position here and then it's probably hopefully the first quarter.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment to the various boards. Have the agenda dismissed?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the appointment to the various boards by the mayor. Would the clerk please call over?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steich?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahr?
Yes.
Malan? Yes.
Thank you. Next item will consider Cereal Marked Beverage's license application and read more. Looks to have one too far.
Well, okay. Here you go. Before you, for this item is the approval of the annual cereal beverage applications. These are for the businesses in town who sell quote-unquote light beer, those being Jackson Service Center, Emmett's Petroleum, Frost and Barbecue, and then the On The Go Service Center over on Wood End. There are some changes to the state law that we looked into and all indications that we're getting is that the only change as far as our permitting and licensing process is that we are making sure that all of the groups have turned in a certain form to the alcohol and tobacco tax trade bureau. I guess the TTB form. And all but one of the four groups have submitted that verification at this point. So your approval will be subject on them providing that verification if they submitted that form to the state. That's not, that's not a form that we need for our review purposes, but it's something the state needs as part of the change in the state law. The main change being that in April, essentially the definition of CNB is going to be changing and they can sell up to six point beer. They've undergone all their fire and police inspections and I recommend approval pending verification of their state requirements.
Who is the one that has not submitted and when is it due?
It's due before the end of the year. So they would be issued a CNB license on December 31st at Jackson Service Center. It's the one that's not provided yet.
Make a motion to, I guess, will you adopt it?
Yeah.
Approve the beverage, cereal beverage license application.
Second.
Would, should we add?
I would say, yeah, to add the caveat pending the...
Subject to...
Subject to the final verification of their state license.
No, I can cut.
Yes. Okay. Has it been moved in second?
All right.
To approve the cereal beverage license application, renewal, subject to the application's finalization. Do the clerk please call over?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steich?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahr?
Yes.
Malan? Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be conduct a public hearing regarding property of 1516 South 94th Street and report its determination of the matter through resolution 2018-30.
Mayor, I'll give a brief introduction and then if you'd like to open the public hearing, we can. As you will recall, we came before the council earlier in October, November 22nd. Requested that the city council set a public hearing date at this date to consider the property 1516 South 94th Street. And upon the conclusion of the public hearing, then you may determine whether you believe the building is an unsafe unfit structure for human habitation in order that the structure, in this case, be requested that it be demolished or what's left of the structure. As you recall, it was damaged by a significant fire. Most of the building is gone. It is still in process related to, I guess, insurance and owners and et cetera. But this action tonight would simply be to take that information. If you determine that it should be declared as an unsafe unfit structure for human habitation, we will follow up on the requirements that's necessary to post this and notify all the property owners. They were notified of this meeting tonight of the day that was listed as a lien holder entitled search. It was connected by the city. If after the date, which if you find such that it should be demolished, then we are recommending that that work be completed by January 14th. But you can set that date as you feel is appropriate if you determine that it's an unsafe structure. With that, I will step aside if there are any comments or if you want to go to the public meeting and then there are comments from the public before we have to turn aggression, before we go ahead and answer.
Okay, with that, we'll enter a motion to open a public hearing. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to open a public hearing regarding the property of 1516 South 94th Street and record its determination of the matter through resolution 2018-30.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to open the public hearing. Would the clerk please call over?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steich?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahr?
Yes.
Malan? Yes.
Okay, we are duly open for a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Any questions from the council?
Yes. Really good. Yes. So are all police and fire legal? Is that over?
I was wondering if there's... Well, there's still an outstanding issue to see the cause of the fire or whether or not the, what the cause of the fire was and whether there's any criminal issues related to that. But I have spoken to the insurance company relative to their position. I mean, as far as the house being part of evidence at this point, I don't believe there's any issues with it being demolished. It is still the landowner's responsibility regardless to bring the house in for crimes.
And then, so I think it would be good for you to demonstrate to us how, what makes the house uninhabitable.
Do you have, I understood you had pictures to show?
I don't have.
Oh, I thought you had. Well, the house itself and the fire chiefs here and Ms. Snyder's here as well. They may have some additional pictures. But about two-thirds of the house is completely gone. That is, there's no, no part of the house. There remains a harsh full of the roof structure on what would become of south of the house and parts of the garage. Nothing else is there. It does allow there to be an open basement, so there's the fall possibility if you were standing there, child falling there. We did secure the property through adding an additional gate across there imposing the property some time ago. Again, it actually is the owner's responsibility to maintain the safety of the property. But because we felt that that wasn't being handled enough, we took that extra steps. Chief, I don't know if you'd like to...
Other than the 48 miterel feet in the front of the garage, once you get past the attached garage, the next 18 feet of the house structure, the only roof supports you have are charred two-by-six roof supports that are exposed. They are burnt anywhere between 25 and 55 and 70 percent of the roof supports that burned the north angle of the house. That is all that's holding up that one portion of the house. Like you said, everything else is a straight 12-foot fall into the basement. Once you enter from the garage into the house, you're straight into the basement. There's nothing left in there of charcoal supports, any home supports at all. We had to stop over all operations actually on the fire that morning because the walls were already shaking and moving when we're trying to sit there and it's hot spots with it. So it's essentially just ready to sit there and fall. There's nothing left of the support. Anybody who were to get in there and screw around or play around or hurt bump it the hard way, they could bring down higher roof structure what's left of it on other than the garage. About the only thing still, smoke damage, fire damage, and a standard, but anything that's part of the actual. About 1,200 square foot, 1,800 square foot of the home structure itself is compromised.
And the garage would be considered, it was an attached garage as I... So it would be part of the house. And we don't allow actual, we consider an additional use or accessory use for a property. So we wouldn't allow a garage owner to be allowed or built onto a property with no other use to that. But I apologize, we don't have the pictures and...
I can get the...
Well, that's okay. I mean, we can buy those, but it was...
I'll have to see it. I'm good, but...
Okay. Under, under, you're correct. Yes, yeah, there's, I think the chief did a great job.
Would any 14 give them enough time to complete the demolition?
Well, if they wanted to get after it, yes. I will say this is, it puts them on notice. It does a couple of things. I mean, number one, both property owner and the insurance company are now fully aware that it's considered an unsafe unfit structure and that it's dangerous. So they don't want to, at least the insurance company, and there's also a bank involved. So they, you know, they don't want to maintain those structures in that case. If in fact they were unable to complete it, but they're making good progress or coming to hit the demolition permit or trying to get things set up, we can come back before this body and ask for an extension. Additionally, just because the 14 hits doesn't mean that the city's going to be up until the 15, like taking, taking action.
Unless there's zero action taken by then, then we would...
Right, yeah. We are trying to, you know, work relative to the insurance company and the bank. Actually, the property went through, appears a, the bank repossessed the property. So there's actually a, a third party involved now as part of the lien entitlement. So we will notify them as well. All of them are trying to get it, get something correct. And obviously the bank, you know, has certain rights, I'm assuming through the insurance. And the insurance company wants to get declared themselves. It was this matter of, of some legal related issues.
Wouldn't we not have to go through a bid process? And would we be able to give that changed by the...
Well, we would go through a process to hire a demolition crew. We would probably, you know, probably, probably weeks to do that. We, I think there's a limited number of demolition companies out there. We wouldn't be able to do it. That, that's a council meeting night, we only took the 14th. So if in fact there are no actions by that time, then we'll probably come to you and say we want to move forward. We can get estimates, obviously.
So we wouldn't be doing anything on the 15th?
We would not.
No matter if they did anything or not?
Unlikely.
I do like the aggressive date because we've, we've been very gracious in the past and I think we've been taken advantage of by being lenient and giving some grace. I would really rather have us do an aggressive date like this and let them know we're serious about it.
Well, it's been five months since the date of, you know, roughly five, from the, from the date of the fire to the date of this, it'd be five months. I can tell you we have another structure that was damaged with fire. The insurance company's already, you know, doing the things that they should be doing to move it forward and get back in. Now, of course, it was not a fire that was caused by, I mean, believe it be an accidental cause. And, you know, obviously the insurance company's moving forward on those. So it's five months, it'd be at least five months by the time we get to the 14th.
So can we move forward with getting a bid process prior to...
Certainly.
Or getting the bid? And that way, I mean, literally start on the 15th? I mean, when that, when that date hits, you've had your times up? Sorry? And let's get it done.
We can absolutely get bids from now and then, have that on the council agenda.
I think, and, and when we come to the motion on the, on the ordinance, I think if you include that in, that stipulation in that motion, I think we can...
You can. I mean, I mean...
Well, I mean, we're saying...
We're giving the resolution now. Now, you know, what happens between now and then, there's certainly, you know, they, they had an opportunity to be here this evening to basically say to you the structure isn't unsafe and unfit and not available for human habitation. There's nobody here to speak, you know, from them. So, you know, at this point, we're making, or you're making, a determination that you believe it is unsafe, unfit, and dangerous. We have to give them reasonable time to make those corrections. This is, you know, more than 30 days. Again, if they come in and, and they weren't in faceless, as if they're making progress, then that's what they have to do. So assuming it was a house, they could be repaired, so it can be rebuilt. If they came in and got the building permit and they were making improvements, we would come back to the council and say, okay, this is what's been done today, this is what's happening. We would ask for an extension of time.
Yeah, it's no different than the house that we had down here in town. You know, same deal. You know what? Whenever you're showing progress and, I mean, it's not like we're ready to take the house away from you. But, you know, I think that also that if we set a date of the 14th and, I mean, I think that we should be showing that we're serious and they go, huh, what, the 14th came and went, another's happened. And then it take another 30 days maybe. You know, I think, you know what, 14th came, you didn't do anything, we're here doing our, what we said we were going to do.
And understand, just for, for reference, so in these kind of situations, once the time runs or whatever that time is, and we can come take those actions to come make these things. We then have to bill them and they have a right to pay that. And if they don't, then basically we won't be able to do it until later, at a later time. We file a lien on the property. We don't collect our money until the lien is cleared. So you, so we don't own the property at the end of this process.
Right.
So we won't be selling the property. It was a little bit different than what we did on Fifth Street because it was a, a different type of situation because it had tax leads on it and just ran through the...
That was my kind of closing your house.
So we'll have a lien on the property, but we won't have any ownership of the property. So the property owner will still be responsible to maintain the property. And I believe they have other outstanding issues, maintenance code issues in addition to this.
It's a good opportunity for us to get it all, to take care of one. All right. I make a motion. Go ahead. We got to close. We got...
Do we need to make it any, any criminal investigation here so we don't mess with someone's...
No, I, I don't believe at this time, relative to the house and the structure being safe or unsafe is really pertinent to any other actions that are going to move it forward. So I think that whatever's happening from a criminal justice process is moving on its own course. And this won't impact that unless a judge comes along and says no or there's some action of that nature. I think the other people that I've spoken to, which is in the non-criminal side, you know, they have what they need. They have all the information that they need. I think the fire department has what it's need. The criminal justice people have what they need. So it's not as if there's some evidentiary issue that we're interfering with.
Who will be notified of this?
We have to notify any tenants that may be living there, whether we think there are or not. Oftentimes, so you send letters and oftentimes they'll come back and deliver. And anybody that's on the, that has a lien or interest in the property. So that includes the county because they're taxed, they have tax, give a tax due. I don't think there's any delinquent taxes. Obviously the bank. Anybody we think might have an interest in the property will notify...
The insurance...
Through certified mail. Excuse me.
The insurance company.
We will notify them, yes.
And they would be the ones to determine if they're...
They'll determine if they're going to pay, whether they're going to pay, what they're going to pay, whether they'll pay to have a demolition.
Or if they'd still need more investigation time or whatever.
I mean, unless Ms. Devon has, I mean, you know, obviously there's a right shit between the bank and the insurance company, just like in many of our houses, right? So the reason the bank gets it insured is because they have a financial interest in the property. And so you have to maintain insurance so that the bank is made whole. So I'm assuming, and I say assuming because I haven't had discussions with those people, but that is part of the issues as well, right? The bank had a mortgage on this house, we know that. How much it was and terms, we don't. But I assume the bank wants it to be made whole in this environment as well.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing.
We got to close, but...
He'll go.
We got to close, but...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me make one comment so we say something out. What we're going to do now, if I'm understanding, is we're giving them until 14th to make the progress on demolition. And in the meantime, we're going to ask for a quote on demolition in case they don't come through on it. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. The resolution itself is doing, it is basically doing two things. Number one, you're finding that this is in fact a dangerous, unsafe, gravitation building, or a building. And two, that you're giving them until the 14th to remove the structure. So we're not proposing a rehab of the structure because it's not rehabable in our opinion.
But we're pursuing a bid on...
Yes. But the resolution itself is doing two things. It's the finding and it's giving the notice.
So the bid portion should be just left out? We do that off on the side.
We can do that.
The resolution is that it's unabailable and it's gone, then, then we're going to pursue what we're after, right?
My, my comment, Chuck, is that in, in the, in the motion to adopt the resolution, if you direct the city manager to pursue a bid, then that even sends them even harder.
I would do it as an "and" version. You're not making a resolution "and" directed. And not make it part of the resolution.
Did, okay. That's, that was what my intent was.
That would be my recommendation.
All right.
Motion to close the public hearing.
No, second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Would the clerk please call over?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steich?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahr?
Yes.
Malan? Yes.
I make a motion to, give my paper. I make a motion that we...
Adopting resolution.
We just want to adopt the, adopt the resolution, right, or off the bat? And then just to add the "and" part is what I'm saying. We adopt, how come I can't find it on my sheet?
Very nice.
Adopt resolution 2018-30, finding that the structure at 1516 South 94th to be dangerous, unsafe, and unfit for human habitation and set a date of January 14th for the removal, January 14th of 2019.
Correct.
And direct the city manager to start the bid process for demolition and read more.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2018-30. I won't read all of that. And with the stipulation to direct the city manager to pursue bids for demolition. Would the clerk please call over?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steich?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahr?
Yes.
Malan? Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we consider ordinance number 1014, amending Appendix A Fee Schedule of the Edwardsville City Edwardsville Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, every year we have a annual fee ordinance that sets our air utility rates and any other fees or charges that the staff needs to be reviewed for the upcoming year. Those three areas this year are the solid waste charges, sewer charges, and the security officer fees for the community center. I'll start with solid waste charges. The adopted 2019 budget that you all reviewed earlier this year anticipated a 3% increase in utility rates that the city charges its residents from $1,695 to $1,750. This is largely to keep pace with the increases, the contractual increases that waste management charges the city every year to the 1.5% increase built into that. When we went through the approval process for the current contract, essentially our charges to waste management increased about 50%. And then our charges to residents only went up about 15%. So we've been kind of catching up to, to, to that figure to make that solid waste fund, to keep it healthy and to continue to pay for things like utility, billing, nailing, the citywide cleanup, things of that nature. Similarly, in the sewer fund, we anticipated a 3% increase in our variable rates. It will be no charges recommended for our base rate that we charge either residents or our commercial customers. This would increase the variable rate for residents from $3.64 per CCF to $3.75 per CCF. And then on the commercial side, it would increase it from $4.19 to $4.32. And that's based on usage, that just in this space, the, the increased cost of maintenance. The security officer fees. Police staff did some review on some of the rates that, off-duty rates that, that officers charge for working events in city facilities. They looked at, I want to say about 10 different communities. Some of the ones more pertinent to this review, Lenexa, Lakeville, Leewood, or Blom Park, Shawnee, Prairie Village, had rates specifically, off-duty rates specifically for security at city-owned function. The average of that rate was about $39.79. What the, our recommendation is, is to increase the rates that we charge folks at the community center. $35 per hour if you have a party with alcohol, up to 150 people with a minimum of two hours. And then if you have over 150 people and have alcohol, that charge would be $70. And if you've got questions to that effect.
You have to have security if there's no alcohol.
You don't need to have security if there's not any alcohol.
So over 150 people were charging more but not giving another officer?
Oh, sorry. So that's, the way that the fee structure in the code is written, that it's $35 per officer if you're going to have two officers.
There you go. All right.
We do always kind of reserve the right in the rental process if we feel there's a type of event or circumstance that we believe that security should be present, we kind of always reserve that right as a costability and they would be charged an appropriate fee. Effectively, what we're saying is, we're going to charge $35 per hour for off-duty, per off-duty officer that's not secure.
Does the city always provide the security? We don't let the people bring around the security.
We don't let them.
You done?
I'm done.
I'm going to approve ordinance number 1014.
It has been moved in second to adopt ordinance number 1014, amending Appendix A fee schedule of the Edwardsville Code of Ordinances. Would the clerk please call?
Schreiber.
Yes.
Stike.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Kahr.
Yes.
Malan.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, consider authorizing the city manager and fire chief enter into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas for fire and emergency medical response services.
Welcome back, chief.
Welcome back.
Mayor, council members, in front of you tonight is just simply a formal document allowing myself and the city manager to enter to a formal mutual aid agreement with the City of Bonner Springs, something we've already been doing for over a year in an automatic and mutual format that has worked quite concurously with the city in the entire time of both agencies. Like any other mutual aid agreement, we agree to help them out if we have the resources and the capabilities and the same on their side as them come over here to help us and they don't have an existing co-site or an existing emergency going on at the same time. We started out this year to wrap up a lot of our mutual aid agreements in coordination with the highest own inspection that happened before we got a chancellor's call and request and highest own inspection. So, we are just now moving forward and trying to wrap all these up still to pass on to highest owners who just want to stay. So, this is the first one that we have back sides in Kansas, along the task force that we've worked with myself, the city manager, the city attorney, and Artson over at Pat's legal at Bonner Springs. There's been a lot of back sides based myself and Mr. Hubble, the chief of Bonner Springs, to make sure we had a good mutual aid agreement and understand that we went into this. If there's any questions, I'll answer them, but it's very clear and simple that if we have the resources and the abilities and they call for help, we're going to go. And the same on the flip side, if they need our help, we're going to go assist them if we can. And like I said, since January, by sure, we've had an automatic aid agreement for both companies on the fire department side response. We fire anyone to community, the same with dispatch at the same time. This will extend out now with the EMS agencies as well, since there's been a change of command over there. And I know we have talked at length with the new interim EMS director over at Bonner Springs and with the fire chief and explained where our stance was, our paramedics and our ambulances as well. So, I do foresee that we will start to be being requested more and more for EMS calls at Bonner Springs. We have been here in the past too when we've been on a fire in Bonner Springs and they've had ambulance calls up in the city that our paramedics have been requesting to go over. Nowadays, we are starting to work out and identify where there's a jurisdictional boundary out of the cutoff where we'd be able to beat or beat Med 6 and sit there and be able to provide service quicker than Kansas City.
Is this on Bonner's agenda tonight?
Yes, sir, it is.
And they have reviewed it internally through their legal counsel as well. So, both legal counselors and staff have reviewed this document.
So, question, why do you believe we'll have more calls?
It's not so much necessarily more calls, but Bonner Springs, for the longest time on the EMS side, was only working with one agency because they perceived a threat that occurred beforehand from Kansas City, Kansas, where they don't call for Edwardsville or we won't provide mutual aid to you now. That regime is left on both sides. It's a new day. In Windock County, it's opened up all new approaches and avenues. We've used Bonner Springs EMS, they've called for us before. So, it's just a matter of we're closer, smaller communities, it's a better level of service. Not to take away from Kansas City, Kansas, but it's Med 6, I don't call it, it's close to humans coming from 78th and State Avenue further and they're hiding in our high demand service. So, it may affect a small percentage, maybe 20 or 30 calls, despite of increasing services. However, you know, we are announced able to staff our ambulances both 24 hours a day. We will sit there and take out the first ambulance, primary staff, and the second ambulance, staff with people off the pumper and as a backfield for me and Tony, or Mr. Bird, to cut me in when we go to that route. Bonner Springs was not aware that's how we were staffed. They were only, under the assumption, we only had one ambulance staff because there was a cloud. We won't listen to what somebody tells us, we're going to listen to somebody else that was involved, dressed on the ground. So, that has all been cleared up through some diplomatic efforts on both sides. There's a clear understanding of what Edwardsville and Bonner Springs can and will do to everyone.
We really think it's probably a first step. I mean, you know, disagreement can be used with other agencies as well. I think, you know, the relationship has improved, I think, between Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department and some of the other agencies with some of the changes that were about, you know, their staffing and people, but there were some tensions there. I think everybody recognized that. So, I think, drawing a blank on this, I mean, the fire chief there.
Chief Calhoun.
Has reached out, you know, probably had more meetings with the two chiefs in the other departments than maybe they've been in years. So, again, it's all about service at the end of the day. I would say, and I've said this before, I mean, if any department is starting to, you know, if we're running 30 calls a month over at Bonner Springs, then there's an issue that's going to have to get resolved, right?
Well, I mean, that's what my question, my mother lives in Bonner, maybe, so there's changes. The EMS out there thought, look at their changes out there in Bonner. That really was what my question was about.
One of the big ones that was proposed was Chief Hubble would ask, you know, if you don't have a second ambulance though, if you guess was due and they were waiting times, several minutes, fire department there, waiting for a KCK unit, not realizing that we have means for another ambulance here to provide you because they didn't want to take our only ambulance from Edwardsville. And that was where we cleared up and said, you know, if you have an ambulance gone, we will provide you an ambulance as long as we have ambulances available. If we have no ambulances available, we're going to tell you we have none. But as long as we have an ambulance available, what we have here in Edwardsville, we can send it to Bonner Springs to have.
Can we have one?
They have two. They have one staffed around the clock and their other one is staffed with volunteers and it's intermittent and not, I don't want to sit there and say it's not always staffed, it's, I call back for volunteers, but sometimes it does not get staffed. The fire department and their EMTs go back out any second out call, they just don't have the means to transport. So, they have a first responder level of service of about three and a half to four minutes that's on the scene. They just don't have the means to transport off the scene. That's where myself and Chief Hubble have talked about clearing up the fact that we had two ambulances and we provided one over there as long as both bars are not out here in the city. We just provided paramedic and transfer ambulance over to that jurisdiction with no problems at all and produce that weight because there have been some extended wait times because of the ambulance that's coming from downtown, because the west end of Kansas City, Kansas is a bit busy, just because of the fact that they have, they are a higher quality of service.
So, if Bonner's first ambulance goes out, they would call for us before they would utilize their second volunteer unit?
No, they will call their second volunteer unit. If they need a transport, the second volunteer unit, then they will call us if they don't get their unit out.
I mean, if they don't get it out?
If the fire department right now shows up the pickup truck. If that patient is assessed that he needs to be transported, then they call for an ambulance.
Their own.
They call for an ambulance if their own's not coming out, if their primary ambulance is not clearing the hospital.
So, I guess that's kind of where I'm kind of confused is, I mean, what would stop them from saying, oh, our second one's not available, send Edwardsville? I mean, all the time.
Because.
I think it needs to be if your second ambulance is out, then you call Edwardsville because that's keeping them from having to staff a second ambulance.
Talks with Chief Hubble, talks with their interim EMS director, their intent is to have that second ambulance staffed and not rely upon that where they're not staffing a second ambulance. It's still their second ambulance is 100% volunteer staff at this point in time. There are times that you may not have the volunteer response on a critical call to where we can have ambulance over there three and a half to four minutes.
I would say this, I mean, I would agree. It's quite also the same argument that came when we started services, were we going to be able to provide for our own system, right? And I would, you know, that was the argument from Kansas City, Kansas, you know, if we're going to be here sucking out ambulance all the time, then, you know, that's not fair. That's not fair to the taxpayer. I would say the same thing here. But they may call KCK too. I mean, this doesn't prevent one or the other. It just, right now, this gives us that. It really gets around the liability issues, right? I mean, number one is if we have their resources to go, we can go. Nobody has to go. So, if we're not able to go, the chief or the captain in our case on duty says, we don't, you know, because of whatever, we can't go, we're not in any liability as a result of that. The second thing is, it basically says, if we go on call in Bonner Springs and they come for a call here and a person's injured, our person, their person, whoever, we'll be responsible for our people and they're responsible for their people. That's kind of the liability side, the workers' comp issues. That's generally where the big problems come in. So, that's really what most of this is around, not an automatic aid all the time. It's not a combined, we're not combining services, we're not becoming their, I mean, like I said, if they're calling and we're doing that all the time, I'm going to have, I mean, issues with it. Because that's, you know, our number one priority, set from day one, will save forever. Number one priority, 911 service calls in the city of Edwardsville. Number one priority. We have to do that first. Maybe they have.
They elect to have a volunteer department.
Right.
You know?
Their EMS is full time.
Right.
One thing I think might help and this might be in there and I overlooked it, but if we incur costs or is, like, say, we send our people to Bonner Springs, if we incur costs with that, do they pick up those fees or they bill for that or their citizens even? Because I believe we even have these for our people if the ambulance goes.
Well, as far as an ambulance strength, so anything that we do relative to, so we have a chart, so if you get, ambulance comes and takes you to the hospital, we're going to be the builder part for that, right? So, our insurance, you know, we're going to collect their insurance information if they have it. If they're Medicare, Medicaid, we'll collect those kinds of informations. If they're, you know, no pay, we'll collect all the information and still bill them. They have some different, they have some different rules in place for them that they use and that's fine. We'll follow all of our protocols as it relates to building. So, if we pick a patient up in Bonner Springs and take them to the hospital, we're going to bill that patient and their insurance, the cost of that charge. So, it's not free. Now, what we don't do is if, you know, if a house fire, we use foam out of the truck and it, no, they're not, you know, we're not going to ask them to buy us some barrel foam and vice versa. So, things of that nature, the gloves or stuff, supplies, no, because really the ambulance side is built, you know, it's built in to that charge. Again, I think this is really about the liability issues and things. We have an automatic, we actually have an automatic aid dispatch on the fire side. So, if there's a structural fire in either side, we'll call or any responding to those. And when we respond to a structural fire like anybody else, we're going to send a medical unit. Now, we may release ours if they've got theirs, they're, we don't respond with medical unit.
It is dangerous at city limits.
Okay.
Both cities.
That's right.
Because like the day of the McDonald's fire, they had the back-to-back medical calls to Bonner Springs. Our unit was staged at the site at city limits and signs. So, we transported a patient out of Bonner, which we did, that billing their insurance and it's paid for on that side. But our medical unit stays on city limits in case there's an overriding call over there. We send the fire units all the way over. And the same thing, when we have a fire over here, they park their med unit on city limits as well in case we have another medical call that's occurring at the same time to help them go through that. Well, you know, it's not at all that, you know, we all want to help each other and, you know, especially in times of need and emergencies and that kind of stuff. The only thing that we, and I know you all will, is just, you know, making sure that it's not.
We don't want to be.
One-sided and taking advantage of. I'm just curious, because you brought it up, the McDonald's fire, did their second ambulance come out that day?
Yes.
They called it up?
They finally, that's the second crew.
Finally, see?
Well.
I mean, it takes a McDonald's fire for the, and that's what I'm getting at, and that's what I was talking about, that second ambulance. I can see where then, I could just, I'm going to be curious because, and I'm, I will, I'll make a note in my calendar to remind me, six months from now, to follow up and find out how many times we went over there, see how many times that second ambulance got called out. So, just curious. And I know you guys, you guys will want to know too. I get it. I'm just curious.
We're going to deal, we're going to track it. But it's the same nature as when we were a volunteer agency here in the city. You know, not that long ago, this fire department was a.
We're not the size of Bonner either and we don't have their budget.
Yeah, I understand.
And they elect to be a volunteer fire department.
We're going to deal, we're going to make sure that we're not abused because the second ambulance is, as we were told when we sat there and mentioned, is the EMS business. This is just a, an opportunity that we have to also take care of our neighbors to the west of us that has worked out fireside so well for over a year now, that we're just putting it in the paper for format of the legal ramifications to technical liability issues and like I said, to wrap up to what we have to have for our highest own inspection as well to have. I think the city attorney may have a comment to add here.
I just wanted to point out to you that second section in the agreement actually addresses exactly what your concern is.
All right.
That it has to be the repressing party's resources have been significantly reduced, which means that there is actually an inability to get that volunteer crew out and they're not entering into this for the purpose of reduction of staffing either party. So, if we get the sense.
Right.
Have the evidence that that's what's happening, that's not the theory.
And the agreement does have a six.
Sixty days.
It's pretty quick. I mean, yeah, I think that the relationship has been good. We were trying to primarize these, you know, we, you know, trying to do that with other departments around. Maybe, you know, even Levittor County, we've had systems from different things. So, I think this is really the start. We worked on this a lot to get the purpose of this, but again, it's fundamentally around saying this is the liability issues and things. It's not intended for one department to, you know, become the provider of service. We shouldn't expect that from them and they shouldn't expect that from us.
Right.
I can say from just my discussions with the city manager over there, that's certainly not the expectation. And they are working on, I mean, I think they recognize, you know, when you've got, you know, a volunteer department and as they're growing and the call volumes are going up, they know that they've got to also do it, how they provide services. Of course, that's a policy decision for their council to decide, but I don't think it's an issue that's without, that's not known and that there's not things to be looking at how to take care of that. You know, from, you know, all of our people are fire and EMS, right? So, the person on the fire truck today, when he comes back in two days, maybe they're ambulance. I think that's, a good number of their people that are volunteer firefighters have medical EMT levels that are, and a number of the people on their, on their medical side also have fire. So, I think that's one of the things we're looking at is how do they, how do they start doing the same thing we're doing and let most of the veterans do, right? You know, both places, you know, to have segmented medical or fire in or you can provide EMS, it's consolidated under one department.
Put a hitch on those explorers and the police department can.
There you go.
Okay, to trailer and transport.
Pull it, pull it, whack it. We'll get us, we'll get us a couple of nice big Clydesdale horses and go back to.
Drive a vehicle.
It's been, my understanding in the past is some of the challenges have come from dispatching. Have we with the three chiefs addressed that and solved that as well?
I mean, you got, I mean, the dispatching issue.
Terrible, terrible, you don't have to answer that.
The dispatching issue is beyond a police or fire department issue just because of how dispatches are set up, right? So, I think there are still issues that quite often all, but, you know, certainly Bonner and Edwardsville, I think from our media we had, that was a area of concern. I think it's an ongoing situation. There may come a day, quite honestly, with just the volume of calls, you know, depending on. There may come a day, quite honestly, with just the volume of calls, you know, depending on how it works out. You know, our, our plan, our strategic plan when I got here, which was done before they consolidated the dispatching, was that they were gonna do a consolidated dispatch between Bonner and Edmondsville, right? I, I don't think that's where we're at, or where we're going. But, you know, staffing may be an issue at county levels, of properly staff dispatch. I think those are the type of issues. It's not necessarily them dispatching us or not dispatching us, it's some of the resources that, that need, I think that's an ongoing, ongoing discussion, whether it's police or fire, both. Some of the fire dispatch issues that have been worked out are wonderful. So the boundary wars that were notorious when I first got here, and we're not doing this in New York, have disappeared. The means of channels of addressed, I have access to the chief Callahan and his staff, are beyond compare and beyond reproach from what they were three years ago. And as far as when we have issues that occur with dispatch, on minor issues or whatnot to deal with a fire dispatch problem, I get usually resolved issues or it is addressed. I have an answer back within four or five days. That part, yes, we are working through some of that. What used to be typical territorial boundary with all, or wars, have all been disappeared. You know, if the wrong unit is sent, it's, we're in KCK, this is a KCK call, we're gonna handle it. We get here, and it's worked fine several times since then. So that part of, of dispatch is great. It's some other issues that Mr. Webber alluded to, that, you know, are still being worked out every day.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, I put that. I appreciate that, I just wanna recap. When you gave your presentation, you just made that comment, that you forced all the calls going up. So I think this is wonderful.
Yeah.
Good discussion, makes me feel a little bit better, but worth explaining it.
Anytime we have an automatic agreement, you're talking about you're, you're gonna go assist another city, you're gonna have a slight bump in increase in your demographic call. We already track that now with our mutual aid calls.
Because you've been doing this, you said.
Yes.
Then nothing should change.
It, it's, it's not gonna be a 300 call increase in the call volume. I mean, we're talking probably 30 calls or less, even if you incorporated an EMS in an entire full month calendar, unless if we get to where we burn half of the western side of Wyandotte County, which seemed like we did there for about three months. You know, we're tracking about 15, 16 calls this year so far, as between Bonner Springs and us, that have been mutual aid calls.
Mayor, make a motion that we authorize the city manager and the fire chief to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the city of Bonner Springs for fire and emergency medical response services.
Second.
It has been moved in second to authorize the city manager and the fire chief to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, for fire and emergency medical response services. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver.
Yes.
Stice.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kaye Harms.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, they conduct a public hearing to consider amending funding year 2018 budget and to take any necessary actions subject to the hearing.
I will give a brief summary here, Mayor. As you all know, each year we come back about this time, generally this meeting to amend the budget. What I would always note in this, in the budget process, is we adopt our budget, the 2018 budget out. I adopted it in August of 2017. And so we're really talking around 15 months' worth of things that they go on. The second thing is, it's not about revenue, it's all about expenditures. So you could increase, you know, you could have a $100,000 budget and have 200,000 in revenues, but your expenditures go from 100,000 to 102,000, you gotta amend the budget, even though you got $98,000 more than what you thought you were going to have. So most of the time, these budget amendments are related to those areas. The third area that we have this year, which is good, because in the past, the state limited you to only five amendments on each public hearing, so you'd have to have a series of public hearings. They, it wasn't necessarily the law, but that's kind of what they held us to. And now they allow you up to 10 funds that you can amend in a single public hearing. So a couple of these things are really just cleanups, things that have been sitting out here for a long time that need to be cleaned up. So let me just go down the list, I'll address those and, and go from there. So we're, the technology funds initially budgeted at $24,000, we're asking to increase that to 55125, or an increase of $31,125. Predominantly, that has to do with server upgrades. So we have effectively two different servers that run the city. One handles all the public safety, so the courts and the public safety, and so it has certain security. Everything else that we have in the city, you okay, sir?
No, me and this.
Okay, making sure. If we need to, sure. So we're in, we're in the middle of a, we're basically in the middle of a project right now to upgrade that server, and that's really the, the primary thing there. We do collect from every conviction in the courts, a $5 technology fee, which goes into this fund, as well as we transfer money out of the general fund or citywide type thing. So if we wanna buy a computer, need a computer in the city manager's office, that'll come out of the city manager's budget. But if the server goes down, or we have to do some kind of an upgrade of software, those are going to come out of this fund, the technology fund. So that's the biggest one there. Special parks and recreation is increasing, it had a zero budget, increasing to 18177. That is money that we received back from the state when we did the first trail project. So that project had savings of this amount of money. We put it back into the special parks and rec fund, with the knowledge and intent that we would then use it for the next trail project, and so that's what we've done. So it came in and went out. The cemetery, many, many, many years ago, we had a cemetery tax fund and then a cemetery operating fund. We really haven't had the cemetery tax fund in some time, but we got a delinquent payment from some prior year. And again, you have to put it into that tax fund and then do something with it. So it's been just sitting there for a couple of years, and we're just taking it out of the cemetery tax fund, putting it into the operating fund, so it just clears up that fund. The cash bond, that's probably one of the hardest ones to ever really know what you're gonna budget for, so we just kind of throw an average number in there. These are people that have, you know, either been arrested or recited. They have to put up some form of bond, saying they're gonna come to court. They come to court, and then they have certain options. If they're found guilty, they could use those to pay their fines or fees or charges. If they, you know, decide they wanna pay those some other way, they can do that. But they always have this cash bond on their record, so either it goes and applies, or it gets refunded back to the person. But the money comes in, and obviously it has to go out. So this is one of those funds, there's always money coming in and out, and it's very difficult to budget it. I'm somewhat not sure why we have to budget it, and I think we're gonna try to question that again with the state, because it really is funds we hold in trust. I mean, we can't send these dollars anywhere but either to the, I mean, either to the court for the payments, after they plead guilty, found guilty, and the court has ordered it, or it has to go back to the individual that paid it. That's only two options. Economic development, most of the changes here have to do with two things. All the activity that's gone around for the Village South project, again, all the costs associated with that, the legal fees and all those things, have been paid by the developer. But again, they don't care about the money in, they don't care about the money out. And then the acquisition costs that we had for acquiring this property. But again, the money came from excess interest earnings from our bond fund, but I can't make a payment out of a bond fund, like, in that particular sense for this. So it was ran through economic development. Rain Tree Project, this is just held over money from years ago, it's just been sitting there. I mean, we certainly had expenses that never got recovered, legal offensive staff, planning. And so the plan is, those funds will just go back into the general fund, because it's the only place they can go. There, there's really no agreement there. Inspections reimbursed, again, the same thing. We used to use a third, not IDTS, but we used the engineering firm that did inspections. And so money came in and out and paid. And for the last several years, it's just been sitting, sitting there in this reimbursement fund that we'll close that out and we won't use it anymore. And then, of course, the special sales tax fund, again, mainly related to expenses associated with the trail. Remember, we had basically three sources. We got a small grant through the UG Slitter Bond program. We had money left over from the state, and then we used special sales tax. So that is what makes up that increase. So Mayor, if there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them now, or if you prefer, I would open the public hearing. After we've gotten any comments from the public hearing, we can close it. You do have an amended certificate that if you approve, we will need to get this signed. I will note again, I didn't note it earlier, this does not impact our property tax rate. It doesn't even impact the general fund. It has nothing to do with the 2019 budget that you just approved. This is the budget you approved in August of 2017, plus your 2018. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And a motion, a second to vote in public hearing, would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver.
Yes.
Stice.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kaye Harms.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Any questions in the public? Any further questions in the council? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And a motion, a second to close the public hearing, would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver.
Yes.
Stice.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kaye Harms.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Any further action on that matter?
Yes.
No, we're okay?
Okay.
Very good.
Well, we have, we'll need a motion to approve the amendment.
I'm looking to approve amending the 2018 budget.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the amending budget for coming in 2018. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver.
Yes.
Stice.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kaye Harms.
Yes.
Hall.
Next item on the agenda, I'm going to forward this one, Mike, that there has been a question about to consider ordinance number 1015, setting compensation levels for mayor and city council.
I will give you a brief review of where we're at here. I will say that this truly is one of those policy matters for the council's discussions, so I will step out of that unless there are questions. Basically, I would say during the time we were having discussions about compensation general for employees, a few questions were raised with me about, well, how about, how's the council compensation? And how was that handled? So did some research, I really hadn't thought about it too much. But basically, the council compensation and pay, however you wanna look at that, is set by ordinance. From history, it was originally set back in 1986, it may have been before that, but there may have not been coded ordinances that I can find. It was originally set at $75 for the mayor, 25 for the council. In 2001, they basically, they repealed that ordinance and set what is now the current pay of the mayor, 500, the city council, 250. We did, as we would do on other types of things, trying to go and provide you some history. We began contacting a number of cities. You see the 12 cities that were there. You can see the range from, you know, I would call it the purest tongue-in-oxie, where, you know, they'll pay, compensate, will fund their council or the mayor. Other cities take a more, what I would call, a pay approach, that is, it's like a, like a typical pay. You know, generally, I would say that the purpose of this type of compensation is to offset expenses that you have in your normal daily lives to serve your community. And how is that, you know, how do you, how do you do that? And so most places in my history, they don't necessarily have a ready green receipt to try to figure out what your cost or how many hours you spent there. They set some kind of a council stipend, pay, whatever the right word, compensation. So I provided you those 12. I also brought up the five largest, I know that's not really us, but just to give you some idea. Typically, these larger communities have multiple meetings, multiple committees, people serving, a lot of different activities, so the amount of time that they spend in the governmental business is quite a bit more. So I'm just trying to give you those as well. Again, I think I showed you on the second page, you take those 12 cities, average mayor's compensation is just under 800 a month, councils is 383. If you go to the median, which is basically, obviously, the halfway point between them, you're about 650 and 388. And generally speaking, which is kind of in our process, the mayor's paid, or the council pays 50% of the mayor. Some cities literally had that in the ordinance, I think, open a park act set that way, that the mayor pro temp and chairs of committees got 45%, and all other council members got 40% of what the mayor made. They specifically had that in the policy. If you wish to adjust them, you do need to adopt an ordinance, we provided you an ordinance. Obviously, we did not put an amount in the ordinance, because again, I think that's a discussion for you with the city council to have. And so I will, I'm going to just step aside and let you all have that discussion, but I'd be happy to answer specific questions. Thank you.
What I would really prefer would be to do the process of a motion and a second before we get into the question part of it, so that we can expedite this in one manner or another. The motion would be ordinance number 1015. And then during the discussion, if there are any questions or ideas, then we can do that during the discussion.
I, I think we need to determine an amount to avoid the ordinance, I mean, because I don't know. I mean, the ordinance simply just, I mean, to be honest, if you take no action, then it just stays what it is, right?
Well, and, and that's the reason I wanted to go through a motion, is if there's no act, if there's no, if there's no motion and no second, then we don't have to do any.
Right.
That was my.
Yeah, I would say if somebody wants to make a motion, they probably need to stay what they have.
Is that, is that correct?
I'd like to make the motion to adopt ordinance 1015 and leave the numbers as they are existing.
And a motion, a second to adopt the resolution 1015 and remain to the compensation level at what they are currently. Would the clerk please call roll? End of discussion, I'm sorry.
So we're just, we're not making any changes, so we wouldn't adopt anything then?
You could do it either way, yeah.
Leaving the mayor pay at 500.
Well, there, there has been a motion, a second, so you will have to vote on it, even though it's.
Well, it's always, it's so, I mean, I'll start off the discussion. It's always hard to try to give yourself a raise. I think it looks, it's hard to do that. And, you know, and I, I mean, I don't know if you, so, I mean, apparently, it sounds like some are saying that they're totally fine with the amount that they're giving right now, but it sounds like. I don't know if there's any other.
I think just for the sake of, of discussion, if we're leaving it, I'd almost prefer not to do an ordinance, since it's been, gosh, I think it said 2001 is when it was set, just so the date reflects that, even if we're leaving it, I think that, I would just leave it on, I'm not doing the ordinance for it.
The only option then is to withdraw the motion in the second, is that correct, attorney?
It was set by ordinance, yes, it is set by, it was set by ordinance 786, on December 26th, 2018.
The, the comment is to not vote on it at all, so we have to withdraw the motion in the second. Second to draw.
26th, 2018.
The comment is to not vote on it at all, so we have to withdraw the motion and the second. Second, withdraw.
We can look at it either way. You already have an ordinance in place that sets.
Yeah.
For pay scale. If you want to reflect a more current, you know, that you're still saying that that's what you want to do, I suppose you could do that, or it's not necessary, though.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's why.
Right, it's, if that's the way you want to.
So, that's why I'm saying, my suggestion is, is to withdraw the motion and the second and then withdraw.
How does that differ from saying the money is the same, the 500 compensation and 250 compensation?
Well, it just doesn't change.
How does that change it? It just makes a new motion.
Right.
It just makes a new ordinance, right.
And it's dated today.
And that was my point, if you wanted to have a more recent reflection of your.
Discussions.
Of your discussions and your.
So, if we went ahead with a motion to remain the same, then that would clarify up to the current, and, and we would do the same thing if we withdrew the motion and second.
It would have the same effect in the end, right? They would just say that in 2018, we passed this ordinance and it reflected the same.
I've withdrawn my second. So, the second has been withdrawn. So, you made the motion, you would have to withdraw your motion.
Or it's paid.
Or it's paid. Really, if they can't go to vote, we send the second and then withdraw.
Right.
Okay.
Either way.
Withdraw motion.
Do we need to act on that withdrawing motion?
I don't.
Okay, very good. It's over then.
There's nothing.
Okay, all right, so the others, we're fine. Advisory report then.
A few things, just want to remind everybody that the holiday luncheon is this Friday. I hope that each of y'all can be able to attend, at least some of that. It'll be at the community center, there might be 11:00, 12:00, or something like that. We generally start pretty much on time because most of the time, the police and cops are already lined up before the door opens. That seems to be the standard.
The fire president and the police, right there first, yeah.
This is our, this is our planned last meeting of the year, so you've already canceled the meeting. The second meeting would have been on the 24th, so unless something comes up, we won't have another meeting. If it does, we would have to do it through the special call meeting process. But I hope that that's not the case, and it hasn't been in past years. It is the, it is not a holiday for, for the city, but typically, the employees here at City Hall, the administrative process, or any of the administrative people, we've offered, and we do it again when we have a hall like this, where Monday's not the holiday, Tuesday's the holiday, that they can use a day of vacation, and if everybody's in agreement, then the city hall will be closed. That's been what the staff that are on the hourly, this really impacts the hourly people that they have asked to do again this year. So, City Hall technically will be closed on the 24th and 25th. Obviously, city operations continue to operate, police fire, et cetera. If something comes up, we'll, we'll address that. Public works, public works may be, very well be here, so, right, so, just City Hall wasn't an operating unit, but it's a holiday, so that's, so they either, they either have to agree that they're going to come in and work, or everybody take a day of vacation to make it work out.
You're talking.
Otherwise, right on that Monday, otherwise you end up doing another day of holiday and it impacts everybody, and most of the people still can't take the holiday off because they're in police and fire services, right, so.
Well, that's, public works will be here for the Christmas Eve snow.
Yeah. If there's Christmas Eve snow, they will be here. It would not be treated as a holiday from accident, but depending on time of day, it would either be free, this call back, and obviously, anytime they don't have a holiday, there's second compensation for it, or it can be a holiday.
There's a lot of little boys and girls praying for it.
Yeah, I'm sure, I personally will be south of you, so, for the Christmas days, so hopefully, I'm hoping it's not icy, because the part of the south, you get the worst people fill out of you. And so, the only other thing is, just, it's references that recently, at the Kansas Association of City Management Conference, they have, I guess, endorsed my candidacy to serve as ICMA, a vice president on the ICMA, which is the International City Management Association. There's five regions that make up the US, and in each region, they select, there's three different people in each region, so it's, it's kind of sub-regional for this part of, of the area. Whether I am appointed to the board or make it to the board is a whole process, and I won't know until August or something, 2019. It, it's a long process, so I'm, I'm pleased that they saw fit to endorse my candidacy, but we'll, we'll hope for the best outcomes of them, so. Does require a little bit out of office, but most of the stuff is around meetings already, like the conference, and they do stuff on Friday evenings and Saturdays, so the cost of those are covered by ICMA, so private costs, that's not a problem. At this point, that is all that I have, Mayor, and if there's questions.
Okay. Chief, please.
I would just finish up, busy time of the year, a very busy year, and we hope to see you on Friday for the luncheon, and happy holidays if you don't see.
Chief, please.
Saturday is the Grand Creek Fire Cup at IRF at 11:00. So, that's an open invitation for anybody that wants to show up, see the police officers and the firefighters and the families that we adopted this year, and we will distribute the goods out after that, after we heat down at IRF. That process, that's hour and a half down there at IRF, and it will be busy the rest of the afternoon event. Next week, myself.
How many families did we have?
Five. Funds are down, way down. We lost several corporate sponsorships, so our families that we sponsored are down as well.
Local, local corporate sponsors, did we lose?
We lost some.
Oh, yeah, well, tell us which ones they are.
I'll talk to you when we're done here.
That's 11:00.
Well, do you, did they, did they give reasons, or, I mean, are they struggling, or, I'm just curious.
Some of the churches were struggling, some of the corporations that had changes in management, their structure, all of them, they give up money.
Because that's a lot of times, the management change is what makes that.
It hit hard. It's about $1,500 off bag to them, so. And we did have a lot of scrabbles that kind of picked up some order, it hit us there. Next week, myself and Captain Walker will make the last trip to Louisiana for the final inspection on the Quint. It will be finished and delivered to Springfield, Massachusetts, or Springfield, Massachusetts, Missouri, next Friday, and we will see it here in Edwardsville somewhere around the 7th of January, so it'll be here for the council meeting, we have a January brick, and it was carried upon it. You all, it approved the sale of the pumper while I was gone. That is typically scheduled for February, it'll be hauled out by Crystal Mountain out of Alabama. They will come up and take it out. We've got to deal with the school, they're giving us a parking space up at the school, but plus on, to alleviate some of the space. And then our air pack rack, the big rack that we had all the money with, those have been delayed coming here, so Christmas won't pay for that part until the first part of January, and that, other than that, all the big changes we got going there. Great year, busy year, if I have to say, holidays either, I'll see you soon out there.
Thank you, Chief. Any public works?
Yes, just a few items.
You weren't here the last minute, you get a pat on the back, by the way. There was a lot of compliments on the public works performance in the last note.
Yeah, I think our pretty, pretty stand-up job, honestly.
They were great.
And one of the fire captains stepped in to run our first job, which I think was amazing. So, just kind of give you a recap of some of our projects, real quick. First of all, we're going to be one body short for the rest of the winter, one of our staff's out with a shoulder injury, so therefore, when we cease our little trucks, you'll probably see some substitutes in there, probably, probably substitute, and fire department will help us in that respect. On a positive note, let's start off with, I think Wednesday is K-12 bid letting for the projects for next summer, I mean, next summer and spring, and K-32 is getting their surface next year, if you didn't know. Probably from about, I think it's more than 50 foot west of K-7, all the way down to Energy Diva. No, not Energy Diva.
57th, is it? Oh, no, Turner Bag, Turner.
Turner Bag, sorry, Turner Bag. So, they'll have the next spring, next summer, so just stay quiet, I'm sure they'll include us in that information, that's the explosion, but, so it's kind of a positive thing. Our own projects, we wrapped up the Crossroad Pike repair on Riverview this last week. We also did a repair on the reinforced concrete box, the top was failing along, Edwardville Drive, the speaker, that was finished. Tomorrow, we're hoping to get that sanitary sewer flow meter up and functioning down the building. It's been an ongoing issue, and hopefully, we have all the parts and people in place tomorrow, and be better and functioning. And then our 2018 street maintenance project, we pretty much wrapped it up, that was 100 Street, we did have five asphalt patches. We've, we're past our project completion date on that, and the temperatures just hit us so quickly in November that we're, we're calling it good for this year. We're going to work with contract next spring to come back and do those patches done for us. So, we're not going to be done this fall, this winter. It's a little different than the Crossroad Pike repair that we had done. Unfortunately, when you do those kind of patches, you've got to go mobilize from location to location, taking in equipment, and basically, it's almost a six or eight hour, you know, ordeal. So, I was just, that's all, and we'll do this next spring, so, we'll give you an update on this part.
What street did you say the patches were on?
We have two on Richland, we have two on 102nd Street, and the larger one on 98 Street.
We also, did you want to know anything about the, the bridge, 98th and Bets?
Oh, yes, yeah. Well, right, I'm not so good news.
I know, that's not a good news.
Oh, yeah, we often go so well. What could be almost a kind of traffic failure happening on 98th Street, about maybe a half mile north of K-32 on the west side, where the reinforced concrete box goes underneath 98th Street. For years, we have flooding in that area before I came. But this slope of that reinforced concrete box is giving way, erosion is hurt to the edge of the pavement, so we're in the process of getting votes for that emergency repair is what we have to address at this point, otherwise we're going to lose our 98th Street. So, we're actually, our last remaining, about $20,000, $25,000 over there, just to come in and, and extend that wing out and backfill and stabilize that thing. So, I, I think Mike and I discussed it, and he has some creative ways for funding that maybe in the bonding, maybe on bonds, as a kind of issue, yours that were in zero by time. So, that repairs kind of going high within the next couple months.
Thank you, Jim.
If you recall, just the comment is, when we did, I think it was the 2015 bond package, we had, we had set aside, we had estimated about $250,000 to do planning, you know, road planning and right-of-way acquisition on 102nd Street, the Kansas Avenue, there were some of the paving we did down here, both in, like, Blake Street and Trance Street, and I think, I think parts of 98th, but we could use those bond funds because they weren't local streets, and then we put aside about another $250,000 that we were hoping to do planning around 98th Street and K-32 for about a half a mile, give or take, because that's where that bridge is at, that was the thinking was the sewer that we were going to extend to the north at some point, where the split would be, the water, BPU water needs to update their lines through there. So, we originally were thinking we'd be able to go do the kind of full-scale planning and at least get the road acquisition in there, and then look at a bond issue to actually make those improvements in that area. We kind of shuffled that around a little bit, so there's some money left in there, but if we use it for actual construction, likely we'll do a project planning change like we did before, so we may just have to do that, so. And we know that eventually, that box probably is completely replaced, right, and get the width of the road, and get the curve out of it, and all those kind of things, so. One of those, it's one of those where you go, oh, I hate to spend this money on this, but, you know, it's, it's not something we're going to be doing major improvements to in the next few years anyway, so, something that I have to know.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jim. Lisa?
I don't have anything other than to wish everybody a happy holiday.
Thank you. I just want to add, really, to Lisa, I mean, she is really, and I know it's behind the scenes a lot, but she has really been very valuable, her time in municipal government, working on the, on the legal side, has really been helpful, I mean, I, she's, you know, like this mutual aid agreement, or stuff we're doing with wireless stuff, and just like, she has a wealth of knowledge, she's really valuable, and quite honestly, I can send some of that stuff over, and, and she can turn around and get it back in a, in a very timely manner, so I can say thanks, and it's really been a valued transition. Dave was a great guy, did a lot of good work, and there's nobody I'd rather walk into the wind-up town courthouse with than Dave Jucker, like, to his hat. He, you know, he had a lot of legal background, but I think Lisa's expertise more in local has been very valuable, especially some of the things that have just come up this year, and I think are making a difference.
Thank you. Chuck, I'm going to start with you.
Well, it's nice to go down Riverview and not have to go in the other lane to, or the bottom of your car, bottom out, or hit the ground, so, man, it's nice to see that. Hopefully, it doesn't do it again, I don't know what happened last time, that it was repaired, and is it continuing to settle?
Yeah, there's, it was an old stone structure under the road, and basically, someone had stuck an old corrugated metal pipe on the north side, and someone had stuck one on the south side, and the south side was buried, and the pipes weren't even stuck in to where the cord was fitted. So, the patch actually was a lot larger excavation than we anticipated. It should have been only about seven foot wide, but basically, once they got in there and excavated, they actually found that the pipes were in a different location than everything else on the road. So, maybe digging and digging. So, yeah, we have a new pipe.
Nice to drive.
New pipe.
Nice to drive, that's for sure.
Well, wouldn't it say that Mayor's Christmas tree lighting was a fun event? It was a very nice-looking young man with a tree.
Yes, Orson, right.
Yes, Orson.
Zack's son, no, it was Starling. Freeze and Night, I don't know if that helped back some of the kids or families, but it was a good turnout.
Yeah.
It was a good turnout, so. And just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays. Timmy, I hope your crew doesn't have to get out, but they did do a wonderful job. I think that's why you too.
That's why when you were the last captain.
You can take some credit, too. Thank you.
I was going to ask you, what about the, on that inter-local agreement? I think it's a very positive thing, I think it's something that has been going on for a long, long time, and I think it's really official now that there's some documents that are actually signed on that. And I was going to ask, are the condition of the ambulance units on there in pretty good shape, or are we getting close to needing to upgrade any of that equipment or anything by any chance?
We will.
Because it's probably like four years old now.
We will address that 2019 budget cycle, but we have one that is going to need to be addressed during that process. It's more the body than it is the cabin chassis, and we've got several different options, and myself, Mr. Burr, looking at the world, presenting the city manager, I'm with the council, but trying to find the most economically feasible measure before we just sit there and walk in and say we want a brand-new ambulance, so. We are right now leaning towards sending the unit that was done by Coach Force back to have another remount done to it, to VA RP, the Columbia, Missouri, because the cabin chassis itself's only got about 40,000 miles on it. We feel that's the most economical thing, because we've got a large amount of surface activity left on it.
I was just curious.
If you remember, when we, when we first acquired those, both of them were remounts, the concept was going forward, normally, you can get two remounts out of that box, that kind of situation, that's kind of the standard, I mean, sometimes you get more, but kind of the thought process is we would, got us started, got us going, and then at one, you know, at some point, we would buy a full unit, brand-new, you know, get the whole thing, and then that would give us a remount the next time it comes up, and then the other one would stay in service, and a couple of years later, you'd have, so we would start having this. you know, one would be a remount, one would be a new, and then next would be a remount, next would be a new. And we're still kind of working on that kind of concept. But I think we, I think it's gone better from a, from a standpoint of miles than we were expecting than when we first did it. You know, again, there's a lot of unknowns, so.
I just, I really, now I've never here, but I wanted to thank the people who signed up again to serve on the boards and commissions for planning and zoning the cemetery and parks and ref, that's a big commitment, and they wanted to come back and do it again, which I think is, is really a great use of time and conservative community. I was trying to find it, but Doug Box sent a letter a while back that described some of the services that are offered through the county to our city. And I feel like somewhere in there are some streets and bridges, so I just thought it might be worth fitting them up on 98th Street to see if they would like to contribute.
We can certainly.
They don't have that department anymore. They've been here. They used to be way back in, in the early days, but that, that name doesn't exist anymore.
And it's rural, that's rural.
River View probably. Sorry, Karen. I understand. First and foremost, I report.
But to follow up on that, I think some of those things that were in there, our citizens need to do. You know, some of the wheels that were served, and some of the services provided to senior citizens and so forth. I think it'd be really valuable for us to, in the, in the spirit of a unified government, which is really neat to have the, the new mutual aid agreement and the, here that our relationship with the new chief is, is really kind of forging some new territory, and I really appreciate that. So I really, I do appreciate us working towards a unified government, truly unified, all, all horses pulling in the same direction. So I really appreciate that effort in that, and taking advantage of the, of the changes that have taken place. Yeah, I too, that River View is really nice. It's hard, they did a nice job on it, so I appreciate that. Mike, on your congratulations on your ICMA nomination, and anything we can do to help, there's letters of recommendation. Anything needs to be done?
Mayor has.
Oh, I've already done that.
Excellent. If you need anything more, let us know. Regarding the compensation, I really feel blessed to have what we have in a small city that's really struggled for a lot of years with the budget. I anticipate our struggles have gone on for many years. They come as a small city that's trying to grow and put, and serve our, our, our citizens as they would be serving any city around us, and hopefully even better. I know it's no room for better than the communities around us. So I understand that, and it's just a real blessing to serve and to have that opportunity to reverse some of the expenses out of that. But I, I think until there are others in town that some of our other departments receive pay increases and become market compatible, or competitive, that I think we should hold off on any consideration. And I too want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I, I don't know, item I meant to say earlier before you. Of this Wednesday at windout EDC, we will be doing a presentation from the city called Reimagining Edrudeville. And myself and Randy Gordon and Kyle Morrison, which are the engineers and architects who've worked on the very thing. So we're kind of consolidating the various studies that we've done and presenting that out to that body to kind of say, see, this is what's going on here, whether it's trying to redo what we want to do here downtown, or Fourth and K-32, or just development in general. But you know, so much of the focus is always on the industrial development part. Certainly been great, you know, the hard rock is the hard rock. But this is kind of talking about kind of the core of our community. So we'll be doing that presentation, the three of us at that meeting, Wednesday.
Wednesday, what time?
Four o'clock. It will start at four, it will end at five. And if they don't do anything else, if that meeting starts at four, then it's my, I can't.
I don't know the exact time.
So I have a little electric buzzer that they put on, so I can three minutes.
Can we borrow that thing?
It's a one-time use.
Shock collar.
I really do not have a whole lot more to, to contribute other than, appreciate our department so much, and the hard work that police and fire and EMS and Public Works especially, and especially staff too. Really appreciate all your diligence work. Totally been great. And wish everybody a Merry, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I don't like to use Happy Holidays. I like to name the holidays, Christmas and New Year.